Good morning, September thirteenth, our full board meeting will convene the K H double S A. September Board Meeting to order. First item of business is any public comments if requested.
I want to introduce Bill Tingley. Bill's our swim manager. He doesn't have anything on the agenda except he wants to watch. So Bill, do you have any comments you want to make?
No comments today, I'll probably talk to you after.
There we go. Which would be, which would not be unusual. We always appreciate Bill's work. Sarah and Bush and everybody that's managed swimming can tell you that. He prefers to stay behind the scenes but does one, has, does one heck of all our work. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. We're glad to have you. Next item of business. Yeah, I'm sorry. Next item of business is I need a motion to go into legal sessions for update on special items to have a motion. Have motion with Greg to have a second. Second by Randy. Seen no opposition, all those in favor signify the same eye. All opposed, like sign. We'll now go into a special air legal session and I turn it over to the commissioner. I'll now take a motion to go into our work session. Motion by Greg with a second. Second by Russ. I've seen no discussion. We'll adjourn to our work session at this time. Turn it over to President-elect Larry Colder.
It's going to be three on agenda operation reports.
So hold on, we've got a series of operational reports and basically the way you have, we started this a few meetings ago, I think it'll be smoother. Until we get down to the action items, these items that are clustered, well, I need one motion. So we've got ten basic, quick and dirty reports, and then at the end there's a motion to approve those. So that will be your only time you need to take action, make it a little bit easier on providing. Some of the past providers are resentful, it's now easier. First item on there without any need for brief discussion is the minutes from the July meeting. So if you want to see it, does anybody make revisions or we can just keep moving?
Anything comments on the more minutes in July? Seen none, taking a motion?
We will, we will move all of these in one motion, and that way we can try to expedite your discussion. We have the, the next item is the sports reports from the staff, and I believe everything in here is in the fall. I think they're close to championship order, so. Joe, I believe you got the first two. If you got anything you want to highlight that's not in the report or repeat, send the report.
No, nothing outside of the support. So hopefully we have good weather to get through the golf course.
And you have made considerable inroads with our first ranked state sites on consistency and had meetings and stuff, so I think, I think you're going to see some improvement at the board design.
Bill, what? Can I ask something about golf? And I don't mean to, to drag this out, but it was brought to my attention about should we be involved in what their semi-state sites are charging for their practice rounds? I know there was, there was a little, you know, some of them are private courses, some of them are publicly owned courses, some of them are government owned courses. And there's a difference in what we're charging in different parts of the state, and I understand both sides of it. I mean, if I'm a public course in Northern Kentucky and it's owned by the county and they said, we'll let you play for free, come on, that's great. But if you're a private course in Western Kentucky and you've got to charge a fee. Uh, is, is, should we be involved in any of that to set a generic fee that says, hey, if you're going to host it, you're going to charge X number of dollars? That might stop some of that.
Thank you. I think you'll, you'll like the steps that have been taken.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start Mr. Pope, I'd say the ball, but we've had discussions a lot of those going on this year in response to some of the stuff that happened last year, particularly with Owensboro, the games they were charging. We had a conference call within about two weeks ago to go then again what our expectations were. I can tell you that Kent County and Calvert City, I think the youth on the course rate or the junior golf rate, they're not doing that. Winchester, which is a private course, is charging a much higher rate, still though. So like you said, I think a lot of them are looking at it from the business aspect. And then when you talk to Calvert City in the county, they're looking at it for the good of the game. But you know, making sure those expectations are laid out ahead of time and the people are agreeing with it before we accept them in the future, I think that might be the step to go.
And that's, that's what we've been talking about is as a part of the competition rules that we just want to sign it there if they're not willing to cap it at those two cooperative rates.
And the board approved specs to be able to host last year going into this year. So the courses that were added this year new going in, we wanted it around that junior golf rate. And Calvert City's a private country club too, and they're going by that.
I think you won't see anybody beyond this year that doesn't agree over that rate. So we've got, we just might, they may be under it.
Well, the only reason I ask is because Winchester asked me to come to a board meeting and that they just asked me, I said, listen guys, I'll get you an answer, but I understand why you can't let somebody play for five bucks. And have forty kids show up on, your guy's got forty members on his golf team, says we're all going to show up and play one day.
I'm sorry. So he wanted the other courses to charge more like him, or he wanted to charge less?
No, he just didn't want to be in a situation that he was exempted going forward. He said, we love it, we like it having here, we want to make sure that we're participatory. Just let us know what we have to do. He said, I may have to present it to our board before, say, okay, we're going to do this fee during this particular event in order to have it. So I mean, they just wanted to make sure they weren't exempted in the future because they really enjoy having it. And again, that's part of our Clark County Winchester connection. I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that.
What were those two rates? Do you recall either one of you?
The youth on the course, I think it's five dollars.
They pay fifteen dollars for a one-time membership, and then when they go to a course, it's five.
Okay, and the other, there's another alternative. The junior was around twenty the last time I knew her. Just for that, so at least there'd be something in place. But putting that standard in place and giving them a chance to decline their executive.
Okay.
Oh yeah. The Owensboro people like to ruin it very bad. Um, Phil Hockey?
Yeah, Phil Hockey, we have one last region site, we're just waiting on confirmation from, uh, to get that manager information posted, distributed postseason instructions. But I don't know if it's in the agenda later, but we do have the draw coming up.
Cross country?
We met actually yesterday out there with the staff at Trust Country, so we're quickly trying to plan for the next six weeks for the state event. Um, I did confirm that our coaches association is going to be able to have one meet out there before our meet, um, which is very helpful for us. Um, just working with them and letting them have access, letting our students have access to the course before our race as well, an option throughout the season. We're obviously still going to offer that practice option Friday night, but we did meet with them yesterday and we are quickly planning for the end of October. To let you all know, I did remind all of our schools when we were out at the regional meetings that our state date is that ACT date. We obviously can't avoid the ACT, but I did try to let all the administrators know. So they could trickle down that information. It typically has been on region Saturday and not state Saturday, so it is at least affecting less kids. But we did try to make sure they were aware of that. It's been in the clinic and those sort of things.
I think it's worth noting for the board to keep in mind, there was a time with only four dates that that really was harsh, but now there's multiple ACT dates. Parker?
Everything is in place. Uh, we are, are trying to narrow, uh, we've got two schools that we've got, uh, identified as potential sites. We're honestly trying to see how the landscape will pay counties to, to, to sort of avoid any kind of conflict or problems with that. Uh, but everything is that, uh, we have our, uh, process going forward for our districts hosts and our regional hosts, first round, second round, safe. And we've shared information about that. We've also had some upgrades and some, uh, things that we're trying to focus on. And we're improving and getting the sure experience of leading those first two rounds is the quality of the kids. Like, like it's always been the priority.
We've got that later in the agenda. Anything else on soccer? Disqualifications going, okay?
Yeah, if you want to talk about disqualifications, I'll defer to scoreboard keeper, not this part, but Julian is very focused in on it. So current count.
Uh, it's in the agenda and you're well ahead.
I'm, I'm what, a hundred and probably over a hundred?
Close to a hundred thirty.
Yeah, so I'm at a hundred and thirty, or we are at a hundred and thirty.
Oh, don't be pulling us into that.
Real quickly, whenever we mentioned that, Mr. Cop and Ms. Brown and Ball mentioned their sports are at zero.
Our, our staff, the staff is, is very focused in on it. It's always the need regardless, regardless of certain, certain word of the team. But in this case, I have a hundred and thirty red cards and, uh, I've, I've stressed to, uh, to, to our schools when we have gone to these meetings. I can get rid of half of them. If I could get rid of one word, if I could get rid of the F-bomb, almost half of them would disappear. And why we can't have more success on that, I, I struggle with. Uh, what we have, we have talked about for those of you that were at the regional meetings or who's aware of this. You know, we, we talked about the importance that basically the court or the field is an extension of the classroom. And so the, the behavior expectations for those students during that time should be somewhat similar to what is going on in the classroom. Would we allow a student to get up into the algebra teacher's face, tell him to F off, or stop? And so, you know, we've got to, to continue to fight that battleground to, to make sure that these students understand that hopefully we'll, we'll have some, some. Schools are not fighting. It's not like the schools are sitting there going, we're not taking this serious. But once it's said, it's, it's hard to say it. We're continuing to focus in on that.
In soccer, it's coming game two, and then the second time, the third time.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the time to say it or not, because I, I'm going to say it, uh, at some point today. I guess, obviously if it's a sportsmanship issue, that's one thing, it's, it's a red card, but we also know that you get the red cards for some type of action or play that took place. Where officials ejected the student and some, of course, this is probably, I'm beating a dead horse, and I'm sure it's been talked about for years and the concept of the soft red or what have you, but. I will tell you, when I had a kid who, which it was a borderline call on a tackle and to get it a red, a red card, who now is going to sit out, it's not, wasn't it a sportsmanship like? Uh, I guess it could be argued that it was, but it was determined that, uh, it was a red card, but he didn't use a profanity, he didn't get in a fight. It was a play, it was called, and now will sit out for the next two games. It's concerning for sure, so.
I'm, I've got some really good things. Um, I have been in the office for approximately fourteen years, written fourteenth year. I remember sitting down with Julian that when I first got here, we talked about this. And we have been, and I've been on the committee as the chairman, uh, I've been on there as the historian, I'm still there, uh, today. And, um, we finally have staff at the NFHS that is willing to wade into that. I have been a part of the focus group, just me and three other people in, in the nation, uh, from the committee are rewriting, uh, the rule. Rule twelve that deals with this kind of, and our goal is to structure it in a tiered setting. So that we can find some differentiation between those ejection or disqualifying, disqualifying offenses. So that if a state wants to do something, they might be able to go in there and look at, maybe you give a dip of penalty or a fight versus these other things. Don't have any idea what the final product's going to look like, don't know what the board might want to do in terms of looking at that. That's for another day. Um, but, but the rule is being structured so that we can start looking at that and potentially, um, have, have some, uh, discretion to, to look at that. I do think that we don't want it to be a situation where we have somebody like Butch as the supervisor of officials or the whoever the new person is that ends up taking over that role. Or they just to get to arbitrarily make a decision. We don't want that kind of structure. But perhaps the board, uh, will be able to set some stuff to them this summer, um, that would say, well, let's look at this, this penalty structure that relates to, to this rule, so we can still be consistent with, with the other sports.
Well, there's, there's timing too, because one of the things that, that is a little concerning now, because we are. When we made our conversion to arbiter for officials registration, we lost a, a really valuable connectivity and conduit we had had with our schools on disqualified players. Where we could go back and forth real quick with reinstatements and we lost all that connectivity because we don't, our database isn't going to, isn't going to ever connect again, we hope. Um, with our officials. But what it does open up is the whole discussion about the penalty for DQs. You know, we, we, the board stepped in several years ago and took a one-game penalty for a, a kid and made it a two-game penalty. Which gives you some buffering in some sports to say certain things should be two, and certain things should be one, and we've been looking at that for a while. The state of North Carolina tried it. Um, they ended up, they're not in compliance with the NFHS rules, so they haven't been able to help nationally with it, uh, because they're, they're in violation. So we've got to look at it. One of the, one of the recent concerns, it came up last spring, uh, we, we've got a provision that's been in there probably since the eighties. Where you're thrown out of every game the day you're ejected, plus then your account starts. So what happens on your ejection day doesn't count. And that was from back in the day that, you know, you had to wait on a card to be mailed in. There was a lot of lag time. Maybe there's some ground for, for modification there as well. I mean, you know, what you don't, what you didn't want, the reason that was put in there is so the JV coach, the varsity coach sitting at the JV game doesn't act like a jerk and get thrown out. And get to come right back to the varsity game. But it's probably had some unintended consequences. Back then we also had the, we played slow pitch softball for girls. You didn't want to get thrown out that first game on Saturday, because you might miss three or four games and then the next one. So it's, we, we probably, it'd be a really good time, uh, in, in between, at the end of this school year. To, to look and see what the committees have done, what leeway they've given us. Um, you know, even the terminology they're using. Technically in a soccer book, there's things that say disqualification. And there's things that say ejection, and they're treated the same. We don't do that in basketball, because you're disqualified for five fouls. But you don't face any other penalty. So we're even asking them to look the semantics of the rule books. When do you really want people ejected? And when do you want them just disqualified? And, and words matter, especially when you've got people like you all that are in roles that compare across sports. Well, disqualification is this in this sport, but it's only this in this sport. So I think we've got a ripe opportunity. I didn't mean to kick it off on soccer, but I will say. That when the agenda was printed and the attachment was printed early yesterday, the count was one twenty-nine to thirty-nine. And it's now one thirty to thirty-nine, but soccer continues to widen its league.
I, I think the, the board, I, I do think it will be a very fruitful thing to bring to the board. I think the board has to balance, you know, we have, we're having a hundred and thirty. The question is, are these a hundred and thirty that don't necessarily be DQs, or? Or do we need to continue to hold the line because we're trying to get some kind of corrective action? You know, that, that's the, the balance.
Well, and, and there's another piece. We're also the only state with a mandatory two-game penalty. Our three-game penalty for coaches is the envy of everybody, because it has changed our adult behavior. We really don't get a lot of coaches get, because they know the penalties are high. Two games out of a twenty-one game soccer season? Pretty steep. So it looks, it's good. We'll keep that on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on soccer. I, I talked to Chad a little bit about the, the mercy rule in soccer. Yeah, there's been some discussions are, and ten-nothing, it's not the same as baseball where you can hit a three-run homer, get back in the game or whatever. You know, ten's pretty steep, I think. There's been some real upset at games, maybe lower than that, you know, that would be an option. We set that rule, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a rule set by the board. Uh, it's been that way since I've arrived here. Um, I, I, I would, um, that's something I can give with Julian. We, I obviously I think we want to get through this year. We don't want to change mid-year, but I would have a recommendation, like as I talk to you, I think, you know, some states use eight.
Yeah, there's eight seems to be the common thread.
And so that, I think that's where I would start by recommending is that we consider taking a look at that. I mean, the reality is that nobody's coming back from an eight-nothing deficit either. It's not changing anything. You know, you're, this is one of those instances where you're trying to balance, we don't want to take away opportunities for kids to have some opportunity to play, but what kind of quality is an eight to nothing? For an eight-goal deficit really leading to for those kids in terms of what that play? Um, you know, I, I've, in my, all my time doing high school games, I never had a, a full, full pitcher, uh, you know, in terms of, of varsity. But, uh, I, I think it's at, we know where they have it all in mind. Uh, so I think it's somewhat.
I have a quick question, uh, it's my ignorance too, just what is the rule of soccer? Just the events that I've attended, when parents sit on the same side, it, it has a whole difference. Is there a rule to that, like? The only event that I really ever go, because I think it changes the whole environment, because they're so close to each other. And it creates, and then it puts the officials on edge because, I mean, literally the other night, we had a home game and we had to separate two parents and. It's just they're right on top of each other. And I, I just don't understand when we're in huge football stadiums, why, why we don't have them on two different sides? Like, and I don't, once again, I asked that, is that a rule?
It's, it's not a rule. The, I, I will tell you, Dan Pope, so the way the rules were written for the NFHS. The fault rule is both teams are on the same side on the, on the end and just on either side of the halfway line. There is an option, um, that you could be on, uh, opposite sides, but you would just, you would still remain on one half. You'd be taped one to one another. And we actually saw that become a very popular thing during COVID, because people were trying to, you know, separate and minimize the contact. Um, and back in Douglas, it still does it, um, which annoys a lot of people, but I think they do it because the coach thinks it's an emotional, um, barrier from, from certain things, uh, during the game. But it's not required. Uh, it's something that we can continue to look at in terms of our recommendations, you know, competition rules and things of that nature. Because you're right, I mean, the, the, you know, lawn chair sport and, and the commissioner refers to it at, at certain times. And that close proximity, not only to each other, but to the field can have an explosive dynamic, um, that doesn't result in anything good. I did a college game like two weeks ago and it was a small college, I just was in a favor for somebody to believe in you, say you had the same thing, and I just was, you know, dashing my feet, you know, and what could have happened.
It's not just the student, the whole red card, I had more parent issues. It's because they're so the proximity.
One of the things that, well, one of the things that we can look at, um, we do have in football ironically, uh, because of problems, we've got the rule that you can't put fans, the fans behind the other team's bench. You know, and some of our coaches don't like that, because they don't want their own parents behind them. They'd rather go the other way, but you know, that's, that's, that's really a local problem.
We do have a.
But, but, but let me, let me mention, because one of the things we have done is even step in and say, if you don't have bleachers on one side, you've got to have separation. And we could put that, we could discuss that competition rule. The board also approved years ago, because I can still remember voucher and you're advocating for it, that you had to be ten feet off the sideline. And then over the course of time, that got less and less, and now they're right back at, as I teased you about the lawn chair, but lawn chair is right up by the, right up by the tuxedo. So.
We do have some recommendations out there, most have a ten-yard barrier right now, but we could look at, at, at those things. I think that's a, a really good, you know, at the end of the season, kind of look at and take into thinking that we see the opportunity.
Let the record show that Mr. Colin Juice is legal time for soccer.
Duly noted. I'm going to make that point.
Volleyball.
Do we have any time?
You, you yield your time to Chad?
No, nothing else, because the two items I was going to talk about, the rotation and the hands and stuff.
And nothing, nothing really out of the ordinary is going on in football. Just the, the schedule remained the same for the finals. We're just rolling right along, playing first and second, I believe, so. And that's in your report, so accepting these reports will wrap that up. Then you've got three point three is non-championship reports, uh, just attendance at various, uh, items. Any of you want to highlight anything or just let the, let the record speak for itself?
I think it'd be. A little bit about the NS.
I think that's one worth making sure it's on the record.
Sarah and I took a group of sixteen, fifteen kids to Indianapolis Summit in July. They came back at our hype conferences recently. Um, we have a planning meeting, I'm on that committee this afternoon in fact, and we learned recently that the federation is going to be reducing, uh, the number of students that can attend that. Um, I don't know if, a lot of you around here have had kids go to that, some had kids that went with us this year on it. You know, it's, it's disappointing the fact that maybe we're only going to take two next year and we took fifteen this year. And we share with those kids, okay, with what thirteen of you sitting around this table aren't going to go now, their jaws dropped, they're not real silent. I thank you all for supporting our hype conferences. Um, the kids this year knocked it all apart. They ran it. We came out here and rehearsed and they took the ball. I think we totally underestimate what those kids get those three days in July. And then the, the relationships and friendships now that they have when they come back and do our state conferences, um, on that. We're going to beat the drum. I feel like every year we're fighting to keep this program going at the national level. At a hundred and sixty-eight this year from thirty states, so now you're looking about two from, uh, each state. We'll beg, try to get extra spots, but Sarah, I don't know if you have anything you want to add. It's just. Uh, it's, that's what we're about. It's the kids and, and I'm just going to get it.
We've had an amazing experience with different groups over the years, and when we go to the national one, they have breakouts for adults as well. And it seems like every time they're doing those breakouts, we're trying to defend why we're having it. And it keeps growing. It keeps getting more, more states and two countries this year, Honduras and Canada came. So we're just trying to fight for our kids to still have that opportunity. We're just not sure how many that's going to be, so. But Butch is going to do his due diligence today in that meeting, just trying to voice our opinion from our state. We realize we're close too, as far as our proximity to Indianapolis, and it's might not be as easy for some other states to put sixteen kids on a plane. Where we can drive sixteen kids, we understand that, but it's not, it's not really about the cost when it comes down to it. We've got other states that are sending adults to meetings, but not kids to this life-changing opportunity. It was five days and we had kids crying Friday afternoon, because they didn't want to leave, they didn't want it to be over. And they've only spent five days together.
You know, a couple of you have been to that meeting, the national meeting in person, uh, and the, and the state meeting, or have kids involved, if there's anything you want to add, because I, we're, we're, we don't really care who we pack off. As far as this, we're, we're fighting this thing, because it's so, it's so worthwhile nationally. Russ, you had a kid go through the conference.
Fantastic, and I, he said, Mr. Review is one of the greatest experiences he's ever had. Um, so it's very impactful, um, and we all do a great job with it. Anything that, I feel like anything that the board could do or I could do personally to try to encourage the NFHS to continue this program with the, and if it's financial, I mean, what's the reasoning with that? You can see that it's like, it's growing. Is it, if it's a financial thing, then I would be willing as a district, uh, to send kids if, if they have that opportunity. But that should not be the holdup. I mean, the, the impact that it's having on the kids that are able to attend, uh, far outweighs the financial burden, I think that, uh, that they would be. So I, I don't understand what the problem is with that, and, uh, but I would be in complete support, uh, back in the night, I would talk to anyone that, that try to keep, keep their program going as strong as it is.
I'd do the same. Is that what they're saying? Is it financial? Do they not have a sponsor that, I think that's the cop out of it.
Yeah, the, the, the bottom, it's, it's appears to be, because this was again a topic this past weekend too, and they don't have a lot of people going. It appears to be a little change in strategic direction, as the, the national office is more interested in making a name for itself than it is in servicing its states. There's underlying issues that I'll be quite frank about, and they've taken a little bit of a different direction. They feel like that, that by forming a student committee that they can then say they're getting student voice on their rules. Doesn't mean training a hundred and fifty people to go back in their states, and they've just lost all of sight. Now, the person that staffs it has not. But he, he's also beaten down by, you know, because then you, then if, if you have that kind of philosophical change, then come back and start using them. It's, it's not cheap. I'm sure the hotel costs are pretty good. We pay to get them up there. And we pay for housing here, and then we pay for them to stay overnight when we do the, uh, do the, do the conference. See, the, the problem too is that, and I know. People have gotten where they'd like us to have a state conference all over the state. They may only have a hundred people coming. But, you know, we, we found a way to keep three and four hundred people for two different days by having it in a single spot. Well, that, the training those people got at that national conference, let us, almost be, y'all were almost, you could be hands-on, tell them what to do and anything. So let's see what they can do. And it is, it is powerful. Um, one of the things about the state conference, um, if money was the issue, we wouldn't be having a state conference. We have a little bit of money from Musco that pays for about a fourth of this. It costs fifteen, twenty, twenty-two grand, somewhere in there, by the time we pay all the speakers and everybody else, and license center is not cheap. It's the best loss we take all year, because we see what it does for those students.
You think about what they're able to bring back to their own communities to run their experiments. I mean, it's, it's impactful to everyone in, in, in the district that they come in contact with, and get their own, so. Those, those experiences keep feeding, uh, the better the community.
What I can see us leaning into the people that have been before is for some testimonial. And, you know, it's now graduated kids that went and what it meant and how it shaped and current. And you know, it's now graduated kids that went and what it meant and how it shaped and current care. I think there's, that's where we may lean on people to, let's, let's get this thing, let's get it supported because it, it obviously is critical.
I want to say, I mentioned Mr. Butch. We had, we had several kids ago, a couple of years ago, and the offering was in Lexington and Bowling Green that particular year. And Bowling Green is not western Kentucky, by the way. So this year, you know, Butch and I talked through email and, you know, I just hate that we can't send kids that far. And you know, and I understand it's a numbers game. You get so much better attendance because we're so rural in the western part of the state. But I guess this is my plug for the western Kentucky, not Bowling Green. To at least, you know, our kids really enjoyed that. And I, and me especially sitting on this board, I wanted to send several kids, a busload of kids to that. But we, we just can't do it with the logistics of the travel.
I think the challenge would be for your peers, maybe it's both western half co-ops to commit to a number of people that would be the same to make it where it's neutral. Because when you're talking about the caliber of speakers that are coming in, you know, paying, paying all that for somebody to speak to four, three and 400 versus speaking to 110, second year in Bowling Green. Yeah. It had dwindled dramatically. It makes a difference, but if there was a commitment, they said, look, we're, we're, we're in for 30 kids. We're in for.
Well, we even had some in the western part of state that didn't go to Bowling Green, but chose to go to Lexington.
Yeah. But, and we have that data too. So we can maybe empower those, that those superintendent groups to say, I'll make the commitments. You're doing stack good. Um, the only other thing that, that I'll mention, I, I feel compelled to mention the, the NFHS network. We, we were an initial entry into the network. We happen to, I happen to still be on their board. Because I guess they can't find anybody else. But we are, the network is extremely profitable. Our schools and their use of those automated cameras, uh, which put out much lower than HD resolution video. But they at least video the games. I'm telling you what, we're for a small state like we are, we are doing very well in that in terms of views. The big thing I'll continue to remind you is that less than 25%, somewhere between 20, 25% of the views on a broadcast are within 25 miles of the site. It's not impacting attendance. It's not, where, where their value is, is the people in the next state over who come looking for a Kentucky game. Or in Atlanta that want to see their nephew play or something like that. And our schools have been extremely cooperative. The integration with Arbiter and the game schedules with officials and automated scheduling and the Go Fan ticketing has been a game changer. ADs, as long as they'll just return a phone call, uh, they're able to keep things working. There's a new product they have out now that is checking the, the remote cameras, uh, every morning when there's a broadcast schedule. And if something doesn't fire, they're sending a note out. We have been on them to, we've been on them harder and you might, I probably wasn't very tactile at the meeting. But to include our state offices in that communication so that we can do follow-up. What we are really going to make a big ask for, we know some people are getting pressured about why people want to pay 13 to $15,000 for something they can get free. I don't know. But there are people because of the grassroots marketing campaign that people like Huddle do, that are looking at doing that. And if our schools will simply keep the other cameras on, the content will still keep coming. And it uses virtually zero bandwidth because of the, because of those cameras. Now it's different when you're bringing in all kinds of nice fancy cameras. But we really hope our schools continue to support it. It is not been a moneymaker for us. We take in, we spend almost as much as we take in by the time we pay talent and pay for all the, everything else in the, in the things. We, we have a $60,000 guarantee. And last year, I think I looked at the books, we spent 58,500. So it's obviously not a, a revenue center, but it's certainly getting our message out all over in our, our districts, our, our state department of education. Everybody else has done all they can to make sure this network works. We got to do certain things at the right time. But it has, it really been a good project and we applaud everybody that's been involved. And nationwide, it's a good project. But as I'm going to be talking to Dave and the people down there, but you know, if y'all do go somewhere else, because you'll be back, because the cost of cuddle is going to keep going up. But if you, you know, when you, when you come back, uh, if you're just in the meantime, just don't turn the cameras on. They'll still get the content. Should be a workable answer, but you know, and most of, and we got some people in state that because of some districts going away from it, they might come to it. You never know. But we don't have anything else regarding those reports that we need to highlight. Scroll down. Then officials licensing, let's go. You want to talk a little bit about the current state of numbers?
Yeah. The, the one thing I do want to highlight is the 55 junior officials that we've licensed so far this year. That's 55 more than we have had, haven't had previously on that. Um, and then we're going to have the ref reps folks at the annual meeting tomorrow. They're going to actually do one of the breakout sessions. Have a booth there on site to go over that program.
And let, and let's make sure you all understand, because we need you advocating for that program. There, there's two different ways that we're going to use ref reps. Okay. One is, is curriculum based and they have already talked to the curriculum people in a lot of districts and with the department of ed about integrating that into the curriculum. Where you can basically teach how to become a referee. They won't be as good as Greg Howard was at track and I was at basketball football, but it'll be. But it is a, it is a good first step to get them acclimated. We're also going to be using it though. We get a certain number of free licenses and we're going to make sure these junior people, these 14 to 17 year olds. Who are just getting in and have some kind of training, uh, because we can't always count on every association being consistent, every local association being consistent. Like some do a great job of training and some that don't. And so we really want to use it. So when you hear ref reps, we'll be signing that contract this week. Y'all, we talked about it a year ago. But we're going to be able to do some things. We'll probably put some kind of incentivization, incentivization in it. In other words, maybe the, the junior official has to pay a little bit, but if they finish it, we'll give them their money back. Because we found that especially with referee stuff, if you just give it to them with no investment required on their part, times it gets sick. So we're hopeful with that. So we're trying our numbers. He, I think you've got year over year comparisons. Uh, we're, we're doing pretty good. Uh, I will say, I will speak to one sport that I deal with every day. Um, while those numbers may be equal, uh, close to equal in football, it's not experience equal. We got a whole bunch of new ones that not sure they know what the balls oblong around. But they will in two or three years, they'll, that fruit will bear. And then their soccer's done the same thing. They have a lot of frustrations.
And our student advisor group that we just met from doing the hikes, their group project for this year is they want to focus on getting the message out on the junior official program. Whether it's through social media or other avenues as well. And we'll be having follow-up meetings with them. But that was their project.
We are hopeful that, and I've got this on another item later on, but as we finalize having a person in here halftime to focus on that, that'll obviously be a really easy issue for, for them to take charge of. We've got it down to three finals that we're going to, but we'll figure that out next. We've got to have, call them, schedule interviews with them. You want to lead that, anybody, anything? You want to lead right into DQs, I guess? Not that they're totally related.
I would like to say that. I feel like schools should take more responsibility on trying to encourage, uh, better behavior from the fans, towards referees, especially young ones. Um, instead of being so critical that they're at least stepping up and accepting the challenge and trying to become a official. And they're going to struggle maybe at first, but at the same time, takes a lot of courage to get out there. And what we talk to in that manner is not very, uh, uh, exciting for someone to, to look up and say, I, I don't want to get out there and put myself out there and be spoke to like that. So I think from the school administration side of it, that they need to encourage the fan base to have better behavior. And I'm not sure. I know we've made attempts to do that in the past, but I think it, that's definitely, uh, keeping younger people from being, wanting to come out and rep. And so it's, it's a, it's a problem. So I would challenge all administrations, um, to make their fan base more aware of that. And what you see, it carries over into the kids. When the fans start, it carries over to the kids. And then they think they can talk to the referees how they are from the fan.
I, I agree with you. We've talked about that before, but it's the expectations that we have with administration. You know, you go to some schools and it's just like, it's not being enforced and there is no administration. We, we all have to do a better job of making sure because that sets the climate when you come to that venue. It really does. We have to continue to do a better job, uh, at our ballgame.
And if someone's kicked out of a game, that is out of the administration's hands. If the referees decide to kick someone out of the game, it's not up to discussion. They need to, they need to leave the, not be escorted back into the top of the gymnasium. They, we need to support the referees.
Yeah. And that's one of the main things we tell the referees to do is you're not the one throwing somebody out. It needs to be that game administrator because that dialogue is, does not end there.
Right. And then you see, uh, the game administrators come in and say, you sure, you know, this is so and so, and that's, that's not the way, the way to end it. Well, the referee makes that decision. It's, it's done.
There's a guy named Jay Hammons and another guy named Alan Goldberg who's done presentations before at different conferences. And one of the things they talk about is your, your $5 you paid at the gate doesn't give you unlimited ability. You, you have this, uh, we always say this country has, is blessed with freedom of speech, but not with freedom of consequences from what you do. And at some point, we've got to get that point. I think the other thing you're going to face, and, and I know there's a couple of schools right now that soccer schools are talking about because I've talked to, and I don't normally talk to many soccer officials, but I've talked to a couple of them. They're independent contractors. Once they exhaust their assignments to that school, they're under no obligation to accept the game to go there. And at some point, if that environment's not controlled, you won't have anybody willing to come. That's just a fact because they don't have to go. Once they agree to accept the assignment, they got to go. But they get a decision point.
And I think Russ, right, making a good point. We had at least three, maybe four with Julian and myself, and also as an official. But I will tell you, I've seen kids that are acting with no discipline as, as a student athlete. I can always count on either seeing the coach having no discipline or the fans in general having no discipline whatsoever. You know, they, kids emulate what they see. And when they see a parent acting that way, or they see a coach acting that way, and there's no consequences, they think that's acceptable behavior. That's an example that they're, they're going to follow. So you got it spot on. You got to thank.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll always be honest here. They're not perfect. Officials aren't perfect. We had, we had a game last week likely decided by a, a misjudgment in football where we had a flanker come through and literally pick up the quarterback. Carry him across his own goal line against other people, which is precluded by rule, but somehow we missed that. I, I tell you what though, like, like I told the coach or told the signer when the coach was on the phone with him, I said, you know, that's probably true. Does, does he want to make sure that he, he called every play correctly that night? Did the backs make the right cut? Did the limon, you block when they should have been threatened? Is it, I mean, how many different things went wrong? We're going to continue to preach the human side of this. They're not perfect. You know, they're not, this is the learning level. So appreciate you're all joining in.
Can we just, I thought, send out the sportsmanship read again to all schools and just put out like a recommendation and then remind them about having security. I think that as a game manager myself, um, having a police officer, either their marked car in the parking lot visible at near the front door. Having them in uniform inside the facility or near the property. Um, and then that sportsmanship read is a great thing for me to go back to, like if I have an out of control fan, I'll say, did you hear the sportsmanship read at the beginning? I mean, we read it before every game and I refer back to it all the time. Hey, this is, we're here for the kids. Remember that sportsmanship read that's read? And I know it's simple, but it, that's just it. It is simple. And those things are very helpful when it, when you have to address a fan.
Those of you that are game managers, let me ask you something. We, we've talked about that, you know, we've got the game manager stuff, but frankly, it's written more in prose. It's, you know, lengths, paragraphs. Would a checklist help the administrators easier?
Absolutely.
Because I kind of wanted reformatting if it might help, because I know that, uh, that the whole game management thing, you know, was, was a long diatribe. And at some point you probably needed to steal it. I did have one superintendent tell me, uh, last week, something I thought was really interesting. And it's funny, you mentioned a police car. He, he said, uh, we put a police car out in front of the gym door every game. The officer's at home. But we put a car out there, just the same reason you slow down. When you see one on the side of the road, people just think, I can't see him or her. They're there. So that was really an interesting consideration.
Just reminders are other stuff.
Good. Anything else regarding disqualifications? If we go through that and scroll down, anything? All right. Uh, the next report is 36 transfers and appeals eligibility. Remember that data is, uh, subject to FERPA, but you do have a list of board members. They kind of tell us where we are. And, uh, it's, uh, you all want to take a crack at the volume? It's been a long eight weeks between travel and the volume on eligibility cases, I'm going to tell you.
Other bird, it's missing delivery on the, the number of, you know, eligibility drawings from the transfer world that we have made in high, high diversity appeal. But, um, it wasn't that long ago that we had more than 60 and 80 people through the entire year. I've already got more than 60 this year. It's just since I was thirteen. And we have continued to see that number grow. If I had to point to a cause or reason why that number continues to grow is difficult. I think there's more than one issue. I think simply pointing out the fact that we do utilize Zoom and like kids don't have to get in the car to travel. It is, the cause of that number to go up is not the, the main issue. Certainly does major. Like you really have to take a step back and say, is that bad? You know, should, should someone be precluded from healing because of that lower drive versus somebody in Lexington that, you know. Not very technical. So I, I don't think that we should get focused on that. But we look at the legislation that's been passed over the last couple of years. And look at the goals that all been about affordability and ability and letting school choice dominate things. And the reality is that it's transferred drop of the hat. Um, they don't like something, they leave. They don't stay and try to solve it. Parents take them, they leave. Sometimes there's good reasons for why they're doing that. Uh, there's not. The reality is, is that we're seeing more, you know, but we have, um, tried to take a tactical approach to scheduling the appeals this year because of the volume. I did defer a lot of, uh, winter and spring with sport appeals, um, so we prioritize getting the fall in. Um, believe it or not, we've gotten fall this week, still getting fall, you know, at this point, if you're feeling for a fall sport, you're not going to be very happy. You only have two weeks of the regular season for, for soccer and, uh, and a little bit more volleyball, a little bit less or about the same. Feel like, I mean, that these things are, are not going to, uh, see approval to heal. Um, but we're going to start transitioning over to swimming, um, next. And then we'll start right in with the rest of the sports, basketball. But, uh, got, uh, two hearing officers, uh, that, that you guys are aware of. Uh, Judge Crittenden, who, who's been doing it for a couple of years now, he's a former circuit judge out of Franklin Circuit. Had a chance to run for, for the Supreme Court and for the Judge Noble, uh, when she ran and, and won that seat a few years ago. So he's a very good jurist. Does a great job. Uh, we still have Judge John Adams, who's former Fayette circuit judge, played for Adolph Rupp back in the day. And, uh, and so he has a very good, um, understanding of what student athletics should be about. We have been informed by Judge Adams that after doing this for, I guess he's probably creeping up on 20 years as being a hearing officer. He, he is ready to step aside and take care of some of the things that go on in his life in transition. So I'm actively looking for another hearing officer or maybe even two, given the volume, I mean, take a look at that. Most recently, I've been connected to the judge out of Shelby County. His name is Charles Hickman. He's a former Shelby County circuit judge. So if anybody knows Judge Hickman, has some thoughts about Judge Hickman, please reach out to me, give me a call or speak to me while you're here. If you happen to know of another, um, former judge in your community that might be interested in supporting student athletics, uh, in this regard, let me know. I'd love to hear, hear from them as well, because they do them zoom. Uh, they don't have to necessarily get it in, in the car and drive here. So when I look at, at folks like, like Mr. Henderson, his brothers, you know, people from your own community in that area, that, that would be fine. We'd have to be careful with it. Any conflict like we do with our current ones, but nothing wrong with having hearing officers from, from, uh, outside the central Kentucky area for sure. Given our, our current posture.
Yeah. What, what percentage of these upheld or overturned? I know we talked about that in the past. Were we beating our head against the wall doing this?
It, it's, it's probably, you know, eight out of 10 probably, you know, are eligible and, and, and I, you know, it's funny, you, you know, that you asked that question. Cause I've talked to both, you know, I talked, he and Darren talked ad nauseam, uh, about this stuff. I talked to Julian about it. I think it's, you have to be careful to draw any meaningful data out of the, you know, approval, disapproval rate and that. Because there, there's so many variables. One might, I, I, you know, say that people that don't really have good cases don't appeal. So the ones that do get appealed are going to be granted more often than not. But anybody that sat in one of those appeals knows it could get very complicated very quickly. Uh, and so I, I caution that, but, but we seem to have a trend about eight out of eight out of ten.
The, the hard part to quantify, Matt, is he and I have talked about, again, I, I think, is how many of those are people who did not provide information to Baron that they later provided in the field?
Yeah.
There are some that we know the hearing officer has frankly said, why are we even here?
Yep.
Because they wouldn't provide the original information. So you got to be real careful with conclusions. But I can tell you the rule itself on about all six, um, i- is under review everywhere. Uh, again, last weekend, one of the trends right now being discussed, we don't know how many people are going to do it. One state's already doing it in another way is to apply the transfer restriction beginning in tenth grade, not beginning in ninth. Which does give that whole ninth grade choice. And if you have a problem, go somewhere else option, well, after tenth, we're done. It's kind of like the one time transfer, but it's in a different way of looking at it. But it's interesting to see because that's actually been a draft bill that's been shared with several southern states. But we don't know. It's not, I've not heard anything about it here. But, uh, everybody's kind of looking at, because everybody's having the same battle. They feel like their staffs are on the front line banging their heads and maybe really the only ones that care. I tell you what's been the most frustrating, and then I'll say this to you as school people, is to, to look at the record and see that in the submission, the sending school had their fist on the table. There's no way this kid should be eligible. Here's the facts. Come to the appeal and testify the kid should be eligible.
Which happens far more often than anything. You know, I, I think there's two, there's two examples that, that I give of things that are somewhat difficult sometimes. That's, that's one. Um, and that same schools oftentimes after the hearing will call after the kid's ruled eligible and say, what are we doing here? I told you it was for athletic, I told Darren it was for athletic reasons. And, and like, but, but then you came to the hearing and said otherwise, you know, we are focused in on a record. If it wasn't said or produced or evidenced inside that hearing as a part of the record, it, it can't. And, and so sometimes people think they can kind of, they want to be the bad guy. I, I, I guess it's, it's part of, at, at the same time, we had a case the other day that I, I still kind of am a little bit surprised, but, you know, the, the kid, um, was not happy with his playing time. His parents were complaining about his playing time. They sent numerous emails about not getting playing kind of. And so I didn't understand why they were appealing. And then I asked them in the hearing, so ever have any complaints about playing time? Nope. I'm like, and then I thought maybe I, maybe I misread. So I'm going through the file and I'm like, well, mom, you're here. Cause they were actually authored by mom. I'm like, mom, did you have any problems with playing time? Nope. Did you ever complain to anybody? Nope. And then, and then I put up on the screen twenty emails. And they're like, whoa, we forgot about that. And, you know, so I mean, that, that happens too, you know, and that, that's obviously not going to be, it's going to be a two of the eight.
Well, I, I think my point is like you said, the general assembly's all about movement. And here we are fighting against movement. So that's, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but I don't know if this is working, what we're doing.
And more and more, it appears we got one gap.
Right, right.
So I, I.
Is there any? And I know we surveyed, of course, a lot of surveys, but I mean, is, I think it'd be interesting to know across the state what the thoughts are. And, or is that something that you want to avoid?
No, no, I can tell you, we, if you remember the board, you, you wouldn't, but the board has proposed tightening it down and the schools have been, uh, not know, but heck no.
We had, we had a.
It may be, and it may be the right time to talk about it.
I, I think just for my region, we may split on, you know, the discussion of a one time transfer. I had not thought about this sophomore. Uh, that's, that's an interesting topic, just to see if, if there's discussions out there. What, what people are saying across the state as to how they feel about that because, you know, with the transfer portal in college, it's just, that's, I think it's leaking down to.
Oh, there's, there's no doubt. You know, I mean, today, this morning, I get a call. I want, I want to reclassify. I want, I want a medical red shirt. I'm like, well, there's no such thing, you know, they, they, well, they do it in college all the time. And basketball players do it like every day. I'm like, not in Kentucky, they don't, you know, and but, but it's all that trickle down theory. But we, we at annual meetings, we've had, you know, this has been a whole session where we beat the, the rule up and that's not been terribly long.
No, and what we have found is they don't want it any tighter. They just ha, they just don't have the resources, heart, passion, whatever. Uh, but I think the, the other thing that I, you might want to think about the whole tenth grade thing because at, at some point, the whole one time gets, well, if that's a senior that's played three years, that's a little bit different than a freshman move. So I get it. But I also know you just need to look at, at Larry's neighbor. Because their legislature put in a one time transfer and what they have seen, and this is just something for us to be aware of, is a huge widening of the gap between schools. If people aren't one time transferring to unsuccessful athletic school. So they're widening, the, the ability gaps are widening further. So there's always pros and cons. But Matt brings up the point that, that we discussed quite a bit with various individuals in the legislature last year. Is it starting to feel kind of lonely when, when they're wanting doors open? And, and it's no different than, if you think about the provisions that passed in House Bill five sixty-three, we want you to be able to move unless you play fourth. Now we got that kind of cleaned up a little bit. But the original, with the way it came out, you could distill it down to, we want you to be able to choose unless you play fourth, then, then you can't, you may not go. So it's something worthy of looking at. Our case numbers, we've had almost five hundred transfers this year. Last year, we had almost seven for the year.
I don't necessarily.
I just looked up the backside reference.
I, I, I'm not, I don't think I can sit here and say there's a problem. I, 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 I wonder if the reality of the, the, you know, things have changed. We have evolved and this is just where we are. Julian talks often about a pendulum, you know, from, from very liberal, very conservative rules. And certainly we're over on the liberal side, I think, uh, you know, you know, as it relates to some of these things, but, you know, maybe the reality is this is a new reality. Um, maybe we're handling it fairly decently. Maybe we're going to have more appeals. Maybe we're going to have to focus in on making sure that we facilitate those appeals and manage that to some, that's an option. But we, I think, I think we can't just sit and just ignore. We still got to talk. We have to have discussions. And seeing an athletic rule evolve one way or another as the membership feels.
I would be interested in serving, you know, maybe it's changed a little bit. I know, I never thought I'd get to this point. Honestly, I ne, I never thought I'd get to this point. But I would be interested to see what other schools around the state think about the tenth grade or some, some kind of, not this.
Coach Starbuck just rolled his eyes.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Well, it doesn't take much to look down the schools of, to have transfer kids. It's not two hundred and eighty-four member schools that are participatory.
No.
You can, you can, you can take about fifteen schools and see where your transfers are coming from. So we've.
And they're, and they're correlated to trophies.
Yes.
We're having the West Virginia experience without the West Virginia rule.
I put the numbers.
I mean, that's what I was going to say. The, the gap is widening here. Like, you know, I mean, you have your, your top tier schools and that's where kids are transferring to. And then, so, I mean, are we about the student experience of everyone? Or, I mean, I guess that's my, that's my question.
And it's not school size. They're all ki, all sizes. It's success.
Also money.
Yeah, true.
Who can, who can pay a million dollars to go to a field and strong the only one in the area with one or buy multiple helmets and uniforms and so that's the things the kids like, you know, they like to.
Exactly.
It's interesting because there are some, you know, there are some schools that I haven't yet by history to see come through. Very few, but there's certainly sort of what we call frequent flyers.
You know the process as well as we do.
Yeah.
Okay. That report is in there. Hold on. Um, for you to look at, just a quick overview, state of regulation promulgation. We've had a couple of unexpected delays, but obviously there's some, uh, there's, I don't want to call it uphill. There's, there's some transition going on at our, with our partners at the Department of Education. And I think that they, there's other, whether it's your legal team or other, their, their, their focus is a little bit different than our reg. So we were asked to defer, um, until the next meeting of ARS, which will be next month. So luckily, all of our changes have already incorporated in our rules and they don't put a tougher burden on any students. So it's not, it's not a problem for us. But we've been going through that process. Uh, one of the things that, that happened during our public comment period, it will, will pay us miracle dividends in the future. Is that when House Bill three thirty-one was passed, if you remember, it didn't go into effect till first of July last June. And, uh, we reached out and the Corey Stringer Institute, which is going to be the authority quoted, if anybody has a deficiency on porch safety. We had them review our medicine policies, including our heat policy and everything else. And they made quite a few changes after the initial draft. We're, we're happy with those. Uh, we are transitioning to the wet ball globe for the heat monitoring, which I think will be a super change. I think when our Friday night people realize it's much more forgiving on Friday nights or for night games. Once the sun goes down, the wet ball globe temperature changes dramatically. I think they'll get even more behind it, various price levels, but it's, it's a, it's a good opportunity, Greg. I think demoed the, the fantastic version um, around your campus because a lot of those fields can share one location. And it makes it really nice. It'll actually send you a message when it gets to certain levels. And so we're, we're pleased with the way that transition goes. But part of the reg, regulation promulgation delay was that we wanted to make sure now we got those Corey Stringer things in there. So, and our sports medicine committee didn't meet till late July, late, late July.
Everything's in good shape, but.
Oh, yeah.
It's, uh, you know, bureaucracy and frustration.
bureaucracy, it's best.
I think I'll leave it Julian's description.
There we go.
Take care.
The only other thing we have in there is an attachment and I don't, and I want to caution you because I've said this to two or three people that called me about it. You all asked about homeschool data, uh, and I know you caught it. You said you deal with homeschool kids and Adonis Division used to deal with that. So, um, take that data with a grain of salt. It, it's only the kids that reported. It's probably anybody that's historically always been homeschooled aren't going to be on there. There's lots of reasons why they might not be. There's also reasons they might be double stated. Kelly always reminds me that you sometimes have kids in, out, in, out, in, out throughout the year. So it's not, it's not gospel. It's a pretty good indicator where you're seeing it. I got tickled. One of our board members told me, uh, we don't have any in this county. I, I, homeschool is not a problem. And I think you'd be surprised that he had somewhere between fifty and eighty, uh, a year. So I think sometimes the, the school administrators don't promote those numbers. They don't want to give people the feeling people are leaving. I get it. But, um, the, it's obviously doubled in size since the start of COVID. So we, we've got to look at it and we're going to make sure that we're at the table when there's discussion going. We've heard nothing except we're looking forward to talking to you all in October and seeing what you found out from other states. That's all we've heard from all of that, was we're trying to get some other state policies together. I did get, it was reiterated to me this past weekend, and I'm sure it will be at our meeting, that we go to in our section that you have to be real careful that you don't, that you don't waste capital on what will be a small group of kids. Relative to your total number of participants, it's not that many. We can, if the legislature can work out the, the liability issue if they're traveling, heaven knows if they work out the funding issue, it could change the argument all over the state. So we'll keep you informed. We've not done anything. We didn't tell you that.
Commissioner, would that include those numbers include those private schools located in those districts?
Those are people, this, these numbers are people who were in the, the infinite campus system and had withdrawn to homeschool. That's the compilation of those numbers. So there's lots of little bitty numbers that aren't perfect.
The population fellowship.
Correct.
Their private school within most towns.
Right. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be counted as, when they withdrew to, to CFS, they would not be counted. If they went through to, to that one homeschool that's not too far from CFS, that actually has kids playing for CFS's small grades, they would not, they would not include that. Yeah, because Kelly had kind of, Dr. Foster kind of drilled down on some of this stuff to be real careful. We don't set this in stone. It's just a compilation.
Wondering if member schools, you know, we have the member schools.
Right.
We're in that town or not in that town.
Right.
You know, because technically they are private school.
No, it's, it's just the home. This is specifically to the homeschool federal designation. What it also doesn't include, think, this is just a public issue. So there's, there's obviously other numbers to people that left private school going, going to homeschool. Um, item three point eight, Mr. Rodenbaugh, you clarified some things from the last meeting.
Yep. So, uh, finishing up and wrapping up the twenty-one, twenty-two survey. Um, I worked with those three schools. I think last time I gave you the list of those three schools. I know I wanted to let you know that the survey is doing what it's supposed to be doing and asking for policies and procedures for us to kind of keep an eye on things, especially with new administrators, new athletic directors and understanding how financial aid works. Uh, most, most of our schools that charge tuition have policies long in place. So even if that administrator changes, but it is a good opportunity for, for me or, or whoever's in charge of by, by law eleven to educate them on the specifics of by law eleven. So the three schools there, I continued to follow up with them when we were out on the road this fall about how things are going, adjusting policies going forward. Also, this is a, a note for the commissioner of my findings really, but, um, the, the last note there is our continued monitoring of Evangel Christian as we go forward, that their newer, newer administration has done a lot of work to ensure that they're in compliance, but we'll continue to monitor that, that they now have two teams. So we'll continue to monitor them this, uh, school year as well. And then I wanted to update you, we are working, the allowance that you all made for boy, girl double headers to count in the future. We're working with our developer to make sure that's updated for our schools to be able to still self-monitor with that newest addition as well. So I don't know if you had anything.
No, that would, and that duty is transitioned to Mr. Coe as far as prime date, but not as far as financial aid. You can't get rid of that one. Um, I also caution you.
Put those two together. I'm.
It's okay. Caution you.
Kind of put those two together.
Uh, uh, looking at the information particularly on the bylaw eleven report, the, the potentially could be an individual issue that comes through a hearing officer matter or a school issue that comes through a board matter. Be really careful about conversation. You may end up being the appeal for something that comes down to a school. And last, Mr. Angolia, you have the last report, I believe.
Oh, wait.
What?
I wasn't, we haven't gone over the prime date. I just kind of covered the developer part.
All right.
Sorry.
You have a flow.
Wow. The attachment for the status part of the prime date report, I gave you a list of eight schools at the summer meeting and was, uh, directed to follow up with those eight specifically and give a more detailed report of why they didn't meet it. Um, and so I detailed those all out for the commissioner of the possible penalty as possible.
Yeah.
Okay, Joe, you can have it.
Reclaim my time.
Yep.
She's not going to do the Billbury rule anymore.
We'll see. Uh, the fifth attachment here, um, in three point ten is an update provided by Bolingay High School. Outlining the steps they've taken since our July meeting, which I'll do for you. As you look at that, you can see, um, they have met all the requirements outlined in the G P R order. Uh, they got training for all their coaches. They've shown them residency requirement training that we provided them. Uh, they have assignment sheets there that they sent to us covering that. Uh, they've provided the information they're supposed to provide to us with like coaching addresses and transfers that are coming to their feed. Uh, so at this point, I consider it a good standing and I said, provided through our office, the, um, my authority.
And they've, uh, worked with you on development of something that they can use as a standard instrument. We're still in progress, standard instrument for training new people, which is one of the things. So we don't have to go back down.
No.
So it's not going to be any more staff resources. Any questions on that?
If they are on chat, monetarily.
Yes, they are.
Any more discussion? I guess I need a motion to accept all reports.
When we go to, you'll take, you'll advance that to the meeting and we'll have a motion on the full meeting. Anybody doesn't, anything you don't want to pull?
Randy's going to. We don't have that motion. Okay, we'll just move back to the, uh, the poll.
There's no objection.
No objection. Uh, also, uh, I've asked about biology break. If anybody got a problem with that one.
Before you get up, let me make sure we've got some other guests. Marty and David, our friends from K D E, thank you. Mr. Frakes got away from the racetrack long enough to come back. And, uh, in the back, DT Wells from Scott King Schools. And you all, I don't think I've met Mr. Ry Heard, that we talk about a lot, but Frank's in the blue shirt there. And, uh, happens to be in the States for a couple of days and just, I guess ran out of things to do, so he came to the board meeting.
See, uh, how sauce.
There you go. There you go. And then we'll hear from Sarah a little bit later. On your.
Ten, ten.
Okay. Um, we had a little technical difficulty, uh, getting started. So I'll just reiterate for the record that we had about three hundred and thirty individuals from two hundred and seventy schools within our regional meetings and, and over two hundred that come to the new administrators workshops. As we conducted these meetings, we ask each time, how many were new? As we conducted these meetings, we ask each time, how many were new uh, first or first and second year, and it's majority of the room. Uh, so while the, while the content may be uh, repetitive for some of our staff or for some of the schools, it's certainly not for the entire audience. So we were grateful for that. Uh, Mr. Coke's already reviewed the hype student leadership conference. We were um. Sold out of our free conference, I guess you could say. We were full both days. Um, and and we'll take note of some board member input on other options as well for locations. The annual meeting is tomorrow. We do have three seminars that the, if we put out the the third reminder. Uh, actually the fourth reminder early this week, and we now have over two hundred. Uh, people that have signed up for the for the annual meeting. There's only one voting proposal, and we can all remember a day when. The only reason people came was to vote, and now they're coming for the early sessions. We hope that's good. Really innovative program from Christian County High School um, being discussed tomorrow because they have both a broadcast prep uh, curriculum. And an athletic training curriculum within their school, trying to help get sports medicine people, uh, get more sports medicine people trained. Uh, we've got the folks from Ref Reps, as Mr. Coke mentioned earlier in one of his reports, will be here to talk about that program's integration and then. Um, Chad and uh, Jim from UK Sports Medicine will tag team a a little bit of. Really an emphasis on these emergency action plans. It was kind of scary at a couple of our regional meetings. I I will tell you, it was kind of scary to. As we head out of the door to have a sitting athletic director ask one of his peers while we were nearby. What do we have to rehearse? First time that he said he had heard that. Um, so obviously the messaging through the districts and everything is not perfect. So we want to continue to preach that, and that's one of the things Jim's going to do. Then we'll have our 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 regular uh, administer, our regular uh, general session. And Mr. Billings will preside over and we'll get, we'll get all of that done. Uh, like I said, there's only one proposal. Um, I I I think it's worth mentioning about that proposal, you know, it's it's a attempt to modify the. The athletic advantage piece of bylaw six. So if you think about how the rule is structured, section one says that you are ineligible if you have played and go to another school. Section two gives you a list of exceptions. Section three says even if you meet one of those exceptions, it can be set aside by this very specific list of things. And that entire list now can occur, if you, this proposal passes, that entire list can occur from the seventh grade on. Not the ninth grade on. So it's not, it's not a panacea and a cure-all, or anytime somebody's had. Played for a kid, a school, they're automatically going to be ineligible. It's not that. They've got to transfer after playing. And get a waiver by one of the exceptions for to even get near it. So it'll be small, the impact, but visually. And certainly message wise can be, can be important uh, for what's going on within the school. So that proposal will be one of the last things we do. And then uh, Title IX meetings, Darren has been working with our audit team. I think we've said is it twenty four, twenty six? Um, we're going to have two uh, Title IX workshops and both of them will be remote only. Uh, if you look at the map, we've, we've tried to hold two seminars. Uh, around the state based on where the revisits were going to be, and this year we are far too spread. To find two that are centrally located, so we're just going to do them uh, zoom and invite people. Anything on the seminar you want to mention?
Well, the only odd mention, just to kind of support the commissioner says that the ge- geographically, it's kind of dictated by the cycle. You know, otherwise it would be easier to to arrange in a way where you could have go out and stay at a couple of places, but as he said, because they're so spread out. You know, this would be the most efficient way to do it, and they're not spread out like that by choice. They're spread out like that because, you know, the disciple dictates where we're, where we go for revisits.
And as we have turnover in the audit program, we will revisit that cycle to make sure that that you can get that proximity because. But I can tell you that all the people that attend that that uh, Title IX workshop are not just the revisit school. There's a ton of people that go because they're new A Ds, et cetera, and need those hours, or they just want to find out about it. We also are required by regulation. To um, to forward that to our middle school contacts. Uh, so we have to make sure they know about the workshop, so when we get that ready, we'll be able to, we'll be able to follow through with them. So with that, Mr. Coleran, this will be the point in the regular meeting that you would have one, unless people have an objection to moving those reports forward.
Any discussion on moving those forward? There you go, we'll move those forward.
Okay, finance and business. Uh, I just wanted to give you a little bit of note about staffing. Obviously, we've been on, we were on the road for about three weeks. Uh, we have, we had a a few applicants for the official supervisor position. And we've kind of narrowed it down in our discussion to three people that we will interview next week. It will be a a part-time position. Uh, has to be less than twenty five hours uh, per the regulations with the 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 M O A we have with K E D C. Uh, so they won't qualify for retirement and they're a subject of uh, of retirement rule. We have not had a lot of luck in our support staff position, so we, we're going to probably re-advertise that again. Use some more traditional ways of getting it out. We, we put it on the various social sites. We're just not getting a lot of interest though. I can tell you, Damon, you and Marty probably know this, the labor market in this area is pretty tight right now. Uh, I think every school that's put out for positions has found that out. You all probably did at school at the midway as well. But it's uh, it's tight because we want to be, we want to be really careful who we hire into that support staff position. Um, five point two, Mr. Coke, you want to lead us through that?
Sponsorship contract and T P G and update on.
For some of you guys that I haven't met, um, it's nice to see your face. I wasn't available during the summer meeting because we had our T P G. Retreat at the same time, so I apologize about that. The good thing is we had our goal in twenty twenty three. Uh, twenty two, twenty three, and with that, with success, obviously there's an increase in our goal for twenty three, twenty four. So our goal this year has increased by eighteen point three percent, so. Um, it's a jump, but we are in good shape right now. We're at seventy percent to that goal. Um, and we are, I I can say on good. We're on good speed right now. Our goal is to obviously get there by December of thirty first of this year, so. Um, with the addition of Zach, that's been great. I know that some of you guys have met him. He has been a part-time help at our state championships throughout the past couple of years. He comes from Morehead State. We worked together there for three years, so he, he really knows and understands um, the speed of what I like to operate in. And my goals that I set, not only internally with T P G and the K H S A, but also as a professional. So we have really built a good concept. That means that there's now two of us that are out there meeting with people. We are constantly, um, our ratio is in good shape as for what that means is we're pitching. We're meeting with new people, we're pitching new proposals, we're getting some folks that are really interested, so that's a. Uh, well received. Um, so that's why we feel good about hitting that goal by the end of December. Um, you'll see a lot of new partners this year and we're excited about that. That means that um, the workload will constantly increase. But um, that's what we're here to do, so.
Would you care to share with the board any recognition you might have gotten for T P G?
Um, I did. I was very fortunate. I was um, recognized for the first time they ever had this award. Ben Sutton is our. Senior B P and owner of Teal Sports and Entertainment, and they created an award called. The uh, Ben Sutton Entrepreneurship Award, and I was awarded that um, by. Our whole staff, senior staff, and then um, was very fortunate, Ben Sutton too, so. With that, that's just having an entrepreneurship spirit, thinking outside the box. Pushing an envelope, so it's pretty impressive. When you look at where we're at. Uh, compared to the other state properties of my peers, we're in the top five, so it's. And that's with the size of our state, so it's pretty cool.
I think I'm also supposed to ask you, and I can't remember if you're from Mississippi or Louisiana, about a partnership presentation you. Did at the retreat with. Yeah, I don't know, but you were, you all were the examples for others, so tell me to be sure. Because he was at our section three meeting with the Southern States.
There's several things that I did at the retreat, but uh, no. It was probably regards to UK healthcare, um, UK healthcare, like you guys have seen over the past two years have become a huge. Player in what we're trying to do, and part of my story when I'm meeting with folks is that. I'm looking for the starting five, and the starting five are our top leaders, our Kentucky focus. They want to be a part of the high school communities. They want to help student athletes. They want to make these championships the most. Memorable experience that they ever have, so um, the UK healthcare partnership constantly comes up. As an example, what um, what we can do in our other T P G properties. And so I don't know if that's what you've ever seen. Oh, well, thank you. Thank you all, and I I always say this, but if you know any businesses or any prospects, I'm happy to um, meet with them. So.
I think it's also, the, uh, we had a couple of new people this summer that would not have seen the detail, but when we went over the, some of the budget stuff this summer. I I know a lot is moving, a lot of things moving for you. And our corporate sponsor allocation in the budget is guaranteed. For about another eight years, and that is totally different than us all sweating if some sponsor walked away. So that, that model has done really well. Um, the good news and the bad news. Uh, is that this young lady will be imparting her wisdom on college age students as well. Uh, and and showing that expertise she's got, so, and I did say as well, not in addition to, or not in in.
But, no, again, we're in great shape. Um, we've had a lot of our renewals that are going to increase this year. And so that's always a positive thing, uh, because they've seen the hard work that we've put into it. And um, again, we just keep, keep meeting with people and that's. There's a constant hustle with it, and that's why we do what we do.
Sarah, is there a portion of the state that that you need some assistance in getting in the door, maybe some? We're missing so many places. I I I mean, I know, I think, you know, I've talked to you about Farm Bureau time and time again. We just can't seem to. And it's Farm Bureau, it's not us, it's Farm Bureau. Uh, is there some part of the state that maybe somebody can aid or assist? If we could maybe put it on a board member to say, hey, get us, get us an opportunity. Is there a part of the state you're needing some more help in, trying to go kick the door open?
That's a great point. Um, Eastern Kentucky is a big area that I want to focus on. There's a lot of different options down there, strong partners. Um, and also Western Kentucky. I have been in Louisville a lot more, um, was there yesterday. Um, so I think as years continue, you know, we're going to be able to lock in multi-year packages and partnerships are important. Not only does that help us keep our number um, in a good, in a good place, but then it also allows us to. You know, there's only twenty-four hours in a day, and I probably work twenty of them, but um, I mean, you know, to get places and and meet with folks. Um, and you know, I talked to Butch about that this week, you know. Some partners, you gotta have a um, a strategic approach to them, you know, it's about. We really focus on building the partnership, so it might take me three or four meetings before I even pitch something. And so um. I guess expanding it across the state is something that if, if there is a good in. You know, and a good relationship already existing, that definitely helps. Um, so. We did lose a couple of long-term partners only because of budgets with them, so there are some categories or areas that could be. Attractive to some Eastern Kentucky folks. Um, so I think that that is good, um, but. And I know that it was a uh, big focus on first round sites, and that's something that is obviously locked in the back of my. Inventory. Um, I think in year four and five, those are things that we can build. To tack on to one of these top, like, starting five positions, and so. Um, Commissioner knows that I have started a good conversation with a big, big leader. Um, in not only Kentucky, but across multiple states, and so I have to be very. Like again, strategic on how I approach that, and I feel like that, that person or that company could come in and. Help with just the first rounds and then even take some of the title um, relationships as well, so. Well, thank you. Um, I have to go ask some people for some money, so.
Tell me the worst I can do, say no.
I'm sorry?
You told me the worst I can do is say no. Mr. Coke, you want to talk about item five three, please?
Yeah, after um, after our last July meeting, obviously trying to nail down where we're going to go for next July. Reached up from Mr. Code Iron and I think he had said we would look at possibly going back to Northern Kentucky. Reached back out to that property we were at this past year. They are available and and we have two windows of dates. Uh, that we could choose to go to. Um, that would be checking in on Monday, July the fifteenth and out on Wednesday, the seventeenth. Or checking in Monday, July the twenty ninth and out on August first. Uh, the rate is twenty dollars a night cheaper to go the second uh, week. Um, and there also is some irrelevant baseball that will be in town. It's the Reds and the Cubs.
I don't know, Bull Ride was just awesome, fun to stay.
We like that. It 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 hadn't been for the rain, it was really good. It was a little wet. Now, the middle week in between there is when K A S A is, and we always try to avoid that week because we're on vacation. Do you have a preference? Because we we really. W- one of the things we found, if we get too early, is we get into your all's last bit of vacation before. You head back, and if we went that second week, because we're used to, when I first started, we went Lake Barkwood last weekend in July every year, about fifteen years. But um, we're open, they're open right now, both that week of the eighth and the week of the twenty second.
The week of the fifteenth.
As a lifelong Cubs fan, I would prefer the irrelevant baseball.
I thought I smelled something.
I'm off the hook now with soccer.
By that, those birds have had such a banner year.
Well, if anybody has any, we need probably discuss that or send that.
Please let Larry know because we'll, we'll probably try to look at it. We've got to look at one potential conflict, we've got to firm up an A S O D, but. Um, before we, but.
The second one. It's twenty dollars a night.
It's just hard for the athletic directors in the room.
Later evening.
On July fifteenth. Well, actually, you know, the start of your first ball practice, and you're out of town. Uh, and not at your school. Uh, because those are the days where you're, you just have to be ready to stay in by your phone.
And that's when it's a normal situation. Some years it's even worse.
Yes. Well, that's the only thing I was thinking about that. The fifteenth is going to be right where everybody's cranking up that day.
If you download that spreadsheet, it's all over the place. It really is local control and it's ugly. It's the diff, they're, they're all over the board on this. We'll start setting next year's dates in February, and by then we might lose. Okay, sounds like the second week's a preference and you can keep doing your work. Have any other commentary? Be sure and let us know. Um, five point four. Uh, just some interim numbers for you. Um, we have, I mentioned this to a couple of the officers. We've been working, I've been working with our auditor for a number of months. We are going to have about three audits at once because of the post-COVID situation. We're trying to get all our, our allocations put in the right spot. So we have a, a, at least a check report for you to prove, these are checks that were written after the last board meeting's report. So there'll be an accurate representation. So there'll be an accurate representation. We have anything that I need to lurch to its problems and then the general ledger report.
How about that?
You're right. I had, thought I had it turned off. I apologize.
So there, there's not much news in item 5.4. We will have by November, we will have had at least our COVID year audit and we will have a whole lot more accurate, still not going to change much. But the best thing I can tell you is cash is always balanced. So there's no money missing. It's just sometimes it may have been put in softball and should have been put in soccer, but we don't, you know, we got, but that's what we try to fix this time. 5.5 is a request for a budget amendment. Y'all approved the draft budget in, uh, in July. And almost immediately, we had a situation occur that we had to rectify pretty quickly. Uh, those of you that didn't follow the news, the area just to the east side, I guess east, uh, of Richmond got hit pretty hard with hail and tornadoes. And it actually totaled one of the vehicles that we, we owned, which was the one assigned to Sarah, their, their house. Didn't just take our vehicle, but her husband's vehicle. Most of their route, two thirds of their house. I mean, they got peppered pretty dang good. So, um, we were able to work out, we have a, a long-term sponsorship with Tanner Chrysler and Stanton. Uh, net of the insurance reimbursement, car's going to cost us around 20 grand. We have that clearly in the budget. So rather than rent a car for a month till we can meet with you, we went ahead and made that transaction. Uh, hoping that you would approve it, but I certainly didn't think you wanted to rent a car for a month. And based on how the pace at which the insurance company handled the claim hailstorm and the resultant car, it might've been more than a month. We'd had to wait. So, but the second piece is, um, is, is significant for us. I've come to you a year ago in January with a request that we increase our, our technology, our custom programming, our custom development, uh, budget um, by 35 grand. I'm asking you again to, to increase that. Uh, this will not involve a general fund appropriation, however. We have 70 some thousand dollars, I think 77, set aside in a Title IX reserve. So what we do each year is rather than burn all our money at the end of the year, if we have certain categories that have unspent money, we've reserved that for the future. So over the, the year that we did not do field visits because of COVID and we did not fully expand because we were down an audit team member, we accumulated about $70,000. It's what, what the board calls designated. There's a big difference between designated money and restricted money. If somebody makes a donation to the Logan Building Scholarship Fund, that's restricted. That's can only be used for that purpose. You're doing some things just to keep us from getting to the end of the year and saying, how many paper clips do you want to buy? How many computers do you want to buy? And spending it all. So we've built up that in the Title IX reserve. We're, we're in need of being able to allocate at least, at least part of a development week, an additional day actually, uh, for a period of time to get our Title IX program kind of overhauled. The other thing that we're doing, uh, in a lot of areas, not just technology development, is insulating ourselves for the future. What happens if people aren't around anymore? What happens if people decide to go? We've got to get some things in place where we can have systematic, uh, easy system replacement. So, um, this, this amendment would let us, um, allocate to $20,000, uh, to, to officially replace the automobile. And it was at state contract price, by the way. So we don't, we pay state contract price. And, uh, and also would let us, uh, deplete that reserve and turn that money into uh, development to clean up. That's, that's probably the number one thing. If we had to, if we had to rank the things we've done in the last 15 years, um, that Title IX report going from a ream of paper to a few button clicks is certainly helped our A B's and our principals. So we think those two things. So that amendment would be part of approving this report. Um, and then you would need a, uh, at the end of this, if you don't have questions on that, you would just need to approve the finance and business reports as, as a group.
Question. Move those items forward.
All right. Six gets fun, I guess. Um, we did at the regional meetings, talked to you all, if you remember, the board made a decision and we, we all in here supported it, that when we come to one site, we have a blind draw. But for those first rounds, we were going to make them more regional. We need, we didn't need uh, assumption going to the central time zone for a volleyball game. We didn't need Notre Dame going to paint. So we, we needed to kind of keep that travel a little bit better. Our superintendents have really supported this regional concept. So we've got the, we've got the long-term pairings laid out. Uh, reminder that it, as we had discussed, uh, it basically puts everybody in four region groups. Over a six-year period, everybody plays each other twice, home and away. It just makes a rotation. And we were strategic in terms of when certain matchups occurred so that we could help with the transition. We presented it at the regional meetings and it was, it was well received. So the, and the pairings I think are the same for soccer and volleyball. The only difference is soccer has an additional rank. Uh, because we're, because of their situation with the recovery time in between matches. So that's what the first round pairings are set. We're going to have the draw show next week. Am I correct? Somebody remember? And we'll do for when we all get together in one, whether it's the four for soccer or the eight for volleyball, the, the fourth for field hockey, we'll have that draw. So be on, we, we'll stream it on, on our site and be excited about having it. So that's just more for your information. We just wanted you to know. We'll work that into the competition rules, uh, as they are reprinted this, this fall. First round state enhancement report. Butch has led a, a, a staff charge on this, um, at the board's direction. And you know, there, there's a link in there that I think you all should be able to see as long as you're logged into Chromebook user. Um, you should be able to see, but there's several things are identified as enhancements to those first rounds to try to get at some of the feedback we got from the board uh, last year. And I don't want to let one site be the problem, but obviously last year, our one golf site in, in the West was not the best first round experience. So, um, there's a list of things that are enhancements. Some of these, um, can be really enhanced if Ms. Hacker's able to sell sponsorship. Because they, they, they certainly are able to, uh, certainly able to do some nice things. But Mr. Cope, you want to summarize anything you all talked about as you went through these?
Yeah, and we, e- each of the event coordinators, we just sat down and tried to think of things that we do at the state site that we could then replicate at the state first round site. Also keeping in mind the crash and burn nature, especially soccer on that and making sure we could get the things executed. And use them next year too, this last, so they're not just burning money one year.
I think our first foray into some of this and some of the pressures on Joe and Cara, but we're going to ship stuff out to the first round sites that can be shipped back. And hopefully if executed, it's going to look like the state term. It's going to feel like the state term. It won't be the end all final, but at least you won't feel like you're just at another invitational qualifying to the state. We were, you all were very candid and we really needed to hear that feedback. Um, a- at all these. And so golf will be a good test for us, see how it works with the managers up to and including putting something in there where they can ship it back at, at our cost and get all that stuff done. So we're excited about that next step. Um, again, no action on any of these is going to be needed, just to report to you. The, the third one we talked about, uh, you all, uh, spent more time on RPI last year than you wanted to as a board. Uh, and some of you were passionate about it and some of you were like, just tell me what we need to know. Uh, but one of the things we were able to do, built into the max preps slash CBS RPI, which is what we started our program with, was a fixed factor for out-of-state opponents or non-member opponents. Um, we, we, we can track if they're non-member. We also can track if they're a homeschool. So we got all that data. It worked out to where around 53% of the time, our schools are successful. The feedback we got from you and the feedback we got from our coaches when they play these out-of-state teams is they're not playing to pad their record because they're fearful of hurting their RPI. So we needed to make that factor more closely aligned with our success. That was what you all said. And it, it really is, we've already, with the first RPI release in some of the sports, uh, yesterday after soccer last week, it's going to make a difference. It may make a one or two position difference as all, but it's not going to penalize people. Now, it's not going to be able to help a school that plays half their schedule out today. I mean, at some point it's going to hurt them. But, um, the big thing you all made a change of is to remember that, um, you allow two playing down options in football, uh, where the bigger schools don't get penalized so hard if they lose and the little schools get rewarded. And that seems to have gone over very well on the football side. That's the only side that applies to the form and the class. So just in there for your reference, we don't need any action. Y'all have done it and it's been implemented and, and Mr. Rhyrd and and the whole staff did a great job of kind of making sure that was messaged correctly. And uh, it, it's not scientific, but neither was point five oh. So we're, we've kind of gotten past that. So it's all, all well and good. And frankly, appreciate your help. Um, and then you have a lump sum to, to just approve those reports that are all of this report.
New discussion? There you go. We're down forward.
The last is the general, um, the last, the report is the two general items. Hall of Fame Screening Committee. We had originally hoped to try to have a meeting today uh, around the board meeting. Our media people are pretty tied up right now with the start of the school year and football and different press conferences, et cetera. So we've already given them the next board meeting's dates as the ideal date. Now we'll try to do that by Zoom as well. Those of you that are first and third year board members on that list, first and third, you're on the screening committee. So you'll get, uh, information about a month before that meeting. It should be, yeah, first week of October. You'll get links to go look. It's all online. Look at our pending nominees and try to help screen those. Um, it's, it's a chore because there's really good people. But we also have got the number of people carried over from the past whose applications haven't expired. That's kind of gone down a little bit. So we're, we're going to be able to give some new people some consideration. So, uh, but that will be in, in conjunction with the next meeting. And then there's a series of articles, one of which was directly related to, to, two of which I guess kind of relate to us. One was the not so surprising news that the Hall of Fame, uh, the Basketball Hall of Fame, we wish them well, but they're going to have to close their building. Um, as others have found, the overhead on building a museum probably cannot be properly estimated. Uh, I'm, I'm thankful the board approved our request years ago to not try to develop one here. Uh, my, my statement has always been, say this to anybody, it's the University of Kentucky with their loyal following cannot make a basketball museum go as a business. That probably should be a lesson to all of us. Because they have people that would pay for anything. And they, they couldn't make it go. So we're, we still want it. We still do some recognition. We still do some nice things. We, one of the things that I'm going to kind of take on as a project for, for the, uh, next, you know, few years is helping with the transition of our own Hall of Fame into electronic format. Cause we're already kind of getting full plaques, kind of carved room for a couple of years, but at some point we're going to need to do that. And that may open up the opportunity for some kiosk back displays and stuff. We could call it a Hall of Fame, but it wouldn't be. It wouldn't be what you get when you go to Springfield, Massachusetts and go to the Basketball Hall of Fame. It's going to be a different story. Um, second thing was there was some coach commentary that, uh, I, I have, you all may have. I've not heard the first negative about your decision to, uh, as we realign football, to not allow voluntary playing up except from a couple of schools who are playing up now, who would still like to do it again for the same reasons. They want to, they want to avoid certain things. And they've not been passionate about it. They understand what you, what you went through. So, we get it. Um, but there's other things in there. I mentioned something about the spectator policy. Missouri passed the same law as Senate Bill 83 last summer and they're having to go through the, the change in transgender rule. There's a really good article, a couple of articles about the NCAA and what NIL and transfer portal is doing to their competition. What it took them a year to see, most everybody else saw the day it went into effect. So it's really good kind of to, to see that. And then there's a really good, a nice article from Paducah, a TV station about our schools and their preparation under House Bill 331. So, um, just information uh, for you. And, um, I would point out, I mentioned this, uh, earlier in, in discussion with a couple of you. West Virginia has a bill that was tacked on at the last minute as part of their general assembly that allows for a one-time transfer and they're already having concerns in their first season about how it's widening the gap between the two. Uh, the better, the better people don't transfer to schools that, that don't have athletic performance very well. It's just a fact. So that's really all we've got in terms of gender.
New discussion? There you go. We'll move those items forward.
Next item under number eight is just to let you know where we kind of are and just make sure you keep this handout handy. The corresponding dates, obviously with the addition of boys and girls lacrosse uh, and boys volleyball, we have to come up with a limitation of seasons. Our plan when we talked to you in July was to bring that to you in November. That's still our plan. It's going to mirror your, your baseball season, uh, because it's obviously the same weather outside for lacrosse as it is for baseball. And likely something similar on the, uh, on the, uh, boys volleyball. The thing we have to keep in mind with boys volleyball is that will, if they're at a high school, they're probably going to use the same gym that 64 of our teams will have district tournaments in. So we've got to really look at that calendar and make sure we get it right. Uh, and then look at a championship concept. So we'll be ready for you in November, but obviously you need to look at these other dates because laying this all on top of each other. I hesitate to say it, but, uh, Mrs. Uber did a really good, uh, comment in the meeting we first came on the board about the fall being the, the, as Sam Sparks used to call it, the 12-week death march. And then by the time you got to spring, you were ready to go again, hoping that we don't have less ready to go again, taking on multiple new sports. But we're going to try to hand walk them, coach them, pat them on the back, get them excited about, add them. So. More details. We'll have a, there's a spot for a motion to approve anything else, but that's, that's that. No one, one you should have. That's because none of that requires action today. Your action items for today are under, are under line nine, and there's only four of their, five of them. And a couple of them will probably get some good discussion. Uh, I don't think nine, one, Sarah and I can answer questions. I'm just me on the facility side, her on the track side. We have got a bunch of information coming in. I spent some time last weekend with those southern states and we're going to talk about it at our meeting. We have no option but to have an, uh, just basically an automatic qualifier, uh, state indoor track meeting. We don't have indoor tracks all over the state. We, we, we can't set up 21 regions. We just don't have them. So we'll have a pretty good idea on the standards. And I think our latest discussion, um, w- we will probably eyeball those standards a little bit this year. So we don't have so many people that it becomes a problem experience. We, we may be a little too conservative this first year. Uh, coming up with our standards and give ourselves some flexibility. You've talked to others. You want anything else you need to add here?
Oh, I, I think he makes a very good point. Obviously we don't have very many indoor tracks and those that are here aren't the same dimensions or the same, uh, meters around. Um, some of them were built different meters where the one at Norton is, is kind of the primo facility. So it would be very difficult to try to have a region per se at a, at a facility that doesn't even match what our state facility is. So there's been a lot of those conversations and challenges as far as facilities, but we know we have the participation. They're going elsewhere to do it most of the time, or they're all going to Louisville, weekend after weekend after weekend after weekend. So uh, we know we're going to have a lot of interest. Um, it's just, we don't have a lot of spaces yet. So.
Well, and that's the, that's the thing that as we look at this, we, we were going to have to line up our standards with events that Norton's holds. So it, we got, and then how do we, if I've got a 10-meter difference at a, at an indoor track in Indiana, how do we equivalent that? How do we make sure that we don't penalize people for going to one that's not that size? So it's, it's trickier than, than people might think. Whole different, whole different story, I feel. But when, especially when you get into the, the sprints, uh, and even a couple of the distance traces, it becomes a little tough to compare apples and apples. And that's, that's what our talent will be. And we've got a good data collection going. So we should be, uh, we'll meet our timetable of November to give you that. Um, the second one is an action item regarding swimming. Um, not only because we're taking us, uh, potentially taking a season, a week, okay, can I try English? Cause we're taking a week of the season away with another postseason race or another postseason meet. But also because of this year, the transition to the region followed by first round state, followed by state. And thirdly, because of Christmas and New Year weekends, we think it's better if the board adjusts the start of swimming from its published November 13th to November 6th for meets. Um, it gives our schools some flexibilities. And I think right now with our pool availability, if you look at the list that Darren and I used to realign swimming a few years back, at least four of those facilities are closed. Uh, are not holding meets with fans. So it's a, it's a big deal. We're getting, a- and just so you feel better, we're not alone. Every other state is incurring problems with, with the COVID water testing requirements that are staying in. You know, you pay that, we paid $3,000, something like that last year just to have water tested. And, uh, didn't think anything was in the water, but basically they've got to run it through certain machines and make sure it's not. Another thing that's occurred in Kentucky, the, the passage of a state law about pools that are open to the public and requirements for lifeguard staffing. It's going to raise the cost of what our schools pay to use pools even for practice. We were told at our meeting at the Mountain Art Center that the pool that they've been traditionally using, it's been a hundred dollars a kid, is $200 a kid this year. Because anytime somebody from not on staff is there, they've got to pay these like that. So we know there's some costs coming in, but if we can address the timing and get, get the word out to these coaches through Sarah's Rules Clinic, here's when you can start. I think we take the. Here's when you can start. I think we take the first step. Swimming is the one I will tell you that has never really lined up with the other sports and it's always been facility driven. We just, it's it's got its own little window. And if you, if you remember the COVID data, we don't have a lot of overlap with swimming athletes and other things. So it really is only impacting the swimming community in most cases. I think those numbers and I've got, it's on my list of things to talk frankly about. We need to regularly pull those sport overlap reports, but I think those, the reports we pulled during COVID, when we kind of set the seasons are really helpful. As far as knowing the impact. And that'll be referred if you approve, we we would recommend, the the recommendation will be to approve that. As part of the, the, our action today is change the season start.
But the practice, start of practice is unchanged, just an extra week for our competition.
Correct, because it's a longer October.
October.
Still, yeah, so it's five weeks.
You just have an extra week for a competition.
Yes, sir, if you want to use it.
I think we're challenged with facilities as far as, like you mentioned, the postseason as well. Once we start aligning, you know, based on whatever y'all decide here. They they may want that week because they're going to have to move their region up in that last regular season because Louisville's not available or whoever it is. Facilities are going to drive a lot of this postseason discussion. And I think giving them that week of flexibility would be wise.
And flexibility is a really good segue to item nine-three, which is the, the implementation plan. Remember the schools voted resoundingly. To have, instead of cutting the regional qualifiers for postseason, to leave it at at least forty coming out. But add the three first round states and then bring a championship meet, which right now the vision would be they have twenty-four people coming to the state. Now, we, it's not final. We've still got to play with a lot of numbers, but right now that would give us three heats in every event. So it works out nice. Now, the timing of this, uh, as we look at it, we're better off to leave the regions. Two weeks before the state, which is nine through ten, and put the first round state in between. If we go much earlier and we're already hearing from people. That if we go any earlier with the regions, we're going to get people having to make choices. As I said, we don't have a lot of overlap. But apparently there's a huge overlap between swimming and cheer. And all the UCA stuff and all the different things. So I, it was kind of a surprise to hear a lot of that from what would be regions thirteen to sixteen. But whether that's, whether, we, we don't have any way of measuring that. Just have the information coming from. From a, a group of schools who who they're, one of the students called me. I think that if we can do it that way. If I say that the region's going to be nine through ten, keep in mind what you've done in everything else. That doesn't mean that David can't get his people together and they decide to go second or. Or fifth and sixth. They can go whenever they need to. You've got flexibility on that first round. Then we've got to get standardization. And I think Sarah's already talked to potential sites at all three. Of, uh, at least we know, uh, starting to get availability. We don't have any contract. But we know where we think that meets should go to cover regions one through three, four, five and six, seven, eight and nine. Truth be told, and Darren and I've talked about this a number of times, if we'd have thought this was going to come, we might have numbered them differently. So that it would have been a little bit better distribution of the schools. So I think when we come back to you in November with a final long-range plan, one of the things we want to do. Is look at an alteration of the pairing of those regions. Keep the travel ones where they need to be, but maybe four and five aren't always together. Maybe seven and eight aren't always together because you're not dealing with a, a big travel difference, especially in the, the population triangle. So, uh, when they look at what, just keep in mind, six-day footballs, we look at an example of that. Where we, they just vary. They just want to, their situations, they just want to lose some of their difference here. But it it works out. I think it'll work out better for swimming. So right now, the only thing this action would do is approve our dates. We'll come back to you and finalize sites, finalize the long-range plan. And again, ultimate flexibility on the region weekend. If coaches don't want to have any downtime between, they can go ahead and go the ninth and ten. They got pool problems, they need a little break back. But I think to back it up any earlier, we're going to start getting. Scroll around. That's what the swimming implementation behind it. The last item. Uh, next to the last item. Next item is going to be fun. Uh, nine point four. You all have already done this, but we just want to get it out there for you. We really need you to help us. Because Joe and I, even our social media side, we're going to pound people to answer the wrestling questions. We told our schools in every regional meeting, we're doing a survey of the schools related to female wrestling. We already know we're going to have a meet. We're going to have a tournament and we know the date. Saturday, is that right, Joe? Okay. Two years ago, or three years ago, we did a survey about the number of weight classes. And the choice was made that we would have twelve weight classes for females instead of fourteen. Now, that vote was thirty-five in favor of twelve and thirty-three in favor of fourteen, but wasn't exactly resounding. Okay, but I don't think anybody thought at that point we'd be already to the point of adding as a championship. We also, Federation has written and developed women's weight classes. And they are not the same as men's. As a matter of fact, the key difference, although you could argue that there's some difference at the lower weights, the key difference is that. On the girl's side of the Federation, the max weight is two hundred and thirty-five pounds or two thirty-seven after the two-pound rope. On the boy's side, the max is two eighty-five or two eighty-seven. Why that's important is the, the history of this, we are assuming a tournament that's already been being held. And we have people who were on the medals, on the medal stand at Mr. Mills High School. Who are still eligible to continue wrestling to exceed the limits. Of the women's weight classes, because the coaches association let them last year stay at the boys classes. Am I correct, Joe? Because they didn't want to fight the battle we may not want to fight either. Which is instantly outlawing anybody that doesn't meet that lower criteria. Secondly, though, Joe continues to remind me, because I know you met, you, you may want to expound upon this, you met with NWCA people, the track wrestling people. Um, it would probably, if we kept it where it is now with twelve classes and they're different. It would put females that wrestle alongside the boys. And also wrestle with just girls on just. No way they're on the same weight descent plan and weight monitoring plan. We're going to encourage jacking around the unhealthy stuff going on because they don't line up. Versus if our schools will say, let's just go with the vote. Now, there's going to be people out there opposed to that, particularly those that are having success in the current system. So expect to hear from them. Expect to hear from a few of our coaches association members who have people in that twelve-class system that are successful. That's okay. Uh, but this is going to be a vote using our border control election system. So it's only going to be able to be done by the designated rep or the principal. So there's the message. We've got to be sure you all get out. Joe, please add anything.
Yeah, but the data management system is one of the constant complaints we've heard about the two systems. So. If we were to go to the same weight classes, uh, everyone would be contained in the same system. There would be double entry, uh, weather management.
Before we leave wrestling, if we're leaving, do you mind? I know we just, the state lost a tremendous friend to, to wrestling.
Uh, yeah, we lost, uh, Mark Schumaker. He was our rules official for the last couple of years. Before my take note. Uh, but, uh, he was, he was a great asset. Um, with me transitioning to take over the wrestling. He was something that I could always rely on to call and talk and text and he really helped me out a lot the last couple of years. I did go to his visitation. And we had him in the castings. He was a great. Figure. And the scientists and the sign.
Yeah, he, he loves, he loves Kentucky wrestling. It'll be a big loss. And and there's obviously a vacuum, both position and power vacuum, you might say. There's people jockeying. Uh, have that position of influence, but Mark was fantastic. I also worked at State Football Finals. Quite an odd combination. Anything else about wrestling in my head that scrolled on? Can you?
Anybody else wrestling discussion?
All right, here's the other items. Our famous rule, I'm going to ask one board member who has, is personally invested to please consider recusing. Uh, because he has a recruiting age sign that may be impacting that. Don't get people to need his don't, thank you. But. We got to do something about all of that. We are taking a beating. Uh, and it may be something that we need to do, even no matter what the school vote comes back. But I think you owe it to the schools to take a vote. Um, the, the recommendation, we could go a couple of different ways and several of you were at one or more regional meetings. So you know. I've mentioned this to schools. It really. I, I just, we asked at nine meetings. Can anybody come up with a reason? Why today we have a restriction on athletes before practice starts in basketball? That we have in no other sport. Not a single person provided a reason why that was a good rule. Now, behind the scenes, they also talked to me and said, we'd rather blame it on you. We don't want them playing. But we don't think it's a good rule. I know Claudette was at two or three meetings. She probably heard the same thing. We had parts of the state that were like, not only can we not figure out why it's there, let's get rid of it. And I think there was a consensus to eventually get rid of the restriction, but. The, the debate at the regional meetings and a lot of you were there, so please tell me if I'm mischaracterizing. Always had a fork in the road. Before the start of practice, there was kind of one consensus. That really, when they not like it, I think we heard from, uh, two people at one region, Mountain Arts. That might like to keep the early restriction. But nobody could really defend it. Then when you get into taking away the restriction, once practice starts, oh, everybody, everybody kind of bristled a little bit. As a matter of fact, the discussion came. What, why would we not, and I think the last meeting is where the guy was the most passionate. Why would we not put that restriction in all the team sports? Cause they're really, and most of them, they're not doing anything at the same time anyway. You know, once they get beaten in the district tournament, they're going on to their travel ball teams. Once they get soccer done, they're going on to their, to their select team. Well, that's a big bite to, to, that's a big thing to bite off. We, this was not a proposal before May first. So Chad continues to remind me that we can't just arbitrarily stick it on tomorrow as a date, even though it would be nice. But what he suggested to me, and I think is a pretty good idea, but it's going to make sure you understand the history, is that we do a referendum of the school. It's not a survey. It's a binding vote. We've only done that with health and safety matters. And since I've been here, health and safety matters and matters that would likely prevent litigation. An example, in the mid-two thousands, when some of our, uh, administrators may have gotten a little wild hair. And wanted to separate our public and private schools and the state board and the legislature said, we'll close you tomorrow. You don't do something about that, we passed out a referendum and they all voted for it. That was the second category. They're kind of saving us from court cases, et cetera. And we've had some health and safety things over the past. This fits into that second category. So I think the recommendation is that you, you authorize a referendum to, to the membership that we send out, like as soon as the meeting goes. If you offer, I'd like to tell, if, if you pass this motion, I'd like to tell the delegates tomorrow and have Mr. Billings tell the delegates tomorrow. Be sure and vote. We need your vote. Need your vote. Um, I, I, there's lots of reasons pro and con. I don't feel the first bit sorry for outside organizers. But I do feel sorry for our kids that feel like that maybe there's events they can't go to. So I don't know what your all's thoughts are. I think our thoughts, as we talked about it in the meetings. Was, let's take one bite at a time. Let's see how the schools feel about eliminating what's before October fifteenth. And depending upon the response we get, maybe we look at something else. Maybe that something else is taking the rest of the year away or adding to other things, but let's don't complicate it. Let's focus on what appears to be the problem that nobody could justify.
I think if you look at the, the history of this bylaw and, you know, this goes back to, heck, I remember when this past few months here, we were talking about. The same issue and Sarah has kind of, uh, 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 sent some more, uh, thoughts on it as well. I'll let her speak to that, but. I, I think we've seen the bylaw change a little bit recently in pieces. Nobody was ready for a wholesale, get rid of it. But, but the membership has shown some open-mindedness to targeting. What is being restrictive a little bit and, and doing it a little bit at a time. So I think this, this option of, of the referendum. Perhaps as the commissioner has indicated, gives the membership the ability to target exactly what we're talking about. Let them speak to that. And if it's acceptable, then we go on and promulgate it and, and implement it. And it can still be a continued discussion about other ins- issues around bylaw nine going forward. That could potentially even come up on next year's agenda if, if the membership, uh, made the proposal or this organization. The board felt like there, they had a proposal they wanted to put forward. Those would still be options. I, I just think this is a, this is a chance for us to get out ahead of something.
So basically what you're saying is if we, if we put it out as a referendum tomorrow. And our membership doesn't decide to bring it up. It, it would stand the way it is now. If we put the referendum and get it passed, we would eliminate some of those restrictions in bylaw nine. Then they would have the option as a membership to come back in May and make it permanent. Or we would have an option as a board to say, we want to do it.
Yeah, I think the clarity is that, that. If we get out a referendum. We, we, we don't know what's going to happen with tomorrow's proposal, but every year we have to promulgate our regular, our, our regulation. So if it were to pass in the next few weeks, we could always tag it on to next year's change, which would make this effective in, in, uh. July twenty-fourth. To eliminate the, the preseason piece. Nothing you can do, nothing you can do. We'll change it through the twenty-third. But then once that's done, then maybe for the future, perhaps the wisdom is the schools try it next year and they see how it's going to go. Vote at the annual meeting, they'll have almost six weeks to know if it's really impacting. So I, we can, we can keep on. I can tell you that most of the people in this office. Would rather have the assignment of dealing with Title IX or soccer DQs than having to deal with bylaw nine. In terms of the assault that comes in. It really is, I mean, the, the event organizers, they're, they're after their dollars, not anything else. So I don't have any problem with that, but I mean, it's, it's something, we appear to be the only ones that care. Our schools couldn't even come up with a reason why it needs to stay in book.
Mr. Billian would be a more direct answer to your question. The referendum would be the same as if it was on.
That's my, that's my, okay, that's my question.
And, and I think if you do nothing. You've got a rule that is applied differently depending on the first day of school.
And that, that's been the big thing that we brought up at every meeting is if you are Frankfurt High School or Barksdown, that I think is one of our first schools that starts. You've got a longer period that your kids can't do anything than somebody that, we were in somewhere and they were starting the twenty-eighth of. Yeah, Boyd County was one of the last school I think that I heard about. Yeah, so their people, yeah, their people, and there's obviously a difference there. But i- it may be that the membership wants it that way. The one good thing about you opening up to a referendum is the way the process works for promulgation. I don't want, I don't know if you want this pressure, because we had to do this once before with a public-private problem. But the membership vote isn't binding on you all unless you make it binding on you all. So you're just one step in the process. So, you know, because you have to decide what you recommend going forward. But anyway, this is, the, the, the request will be that you authorize the referendum and it would eliminate that section A, which is the preseason. Quit trying to edit the preseason description. Get rid of it. They got till October fourteenth. True, that's a, that's a card we can play. Sorry, Chad.
As I say, that, I would, it simplifies and makes it consistent, which is two of the challenges that we've heard from the membership.
Well, here's the problem. We, we did somewhat. We opened up six weeks. But only if there wasn't a restriction on college coaches attending. And the problem was that the wholesale division one and two coaches could not go until a certain date, so that chopped them off. So anything before September seventh? Anything before September seventh wasn't legal in our state. Uh, now they granted, they got, they picked up all the other days from before, but still, it's still kind of half buttered. You know? Well, as I, as I mentioned, and Greg brings up the point about the intent, originally, remember that the history behind this. Is our people were taking the playing spots in community leagues during the offseason. And the Parks and Rec people came. And the parks and rec people came to our principals who used to make our rules. And they said, okay, because he used to be a delegate assembly, one from each district. And they came to him and said, can y'all help us? We can't even get, you know, Joe over here a chance to play because your high school kids are taking all the time. So the delegate said, sure, that's fine. We just won't let them do it during the season. Well, that was recruiting has changed a little bit since then. So, and everybody thinks their kids are recruitable, signee. So is it, is there a fight we want to fight? So. I mean, you're, you were there for three or four meetings. We didn't have anybody step up and say, here, by God, here's what we have to do. We had a couple of people at the meeting, and some of them were at, they probably shouldn't have said anything because they soured the room a little bit. They said, well, we got the most recruitable athletes in the state. We need, uh, probably shouldn't have said that. That wasn't the best tact. But so that's what that one's going to be if you all move it forward. That's the last one, sir.
What's the consensus before we move?
Yeah, it's your consensus.
I think it'd be clear that there's opportunities that our kids are missing out on based on the bylaw line. They are eliminated from exposure opportunities.
Yep.
Positives by that. And I, I do not think that's where we want to go as a state, or as the board, as to limiting our kids' potential for uh, future success and future opportunities. And that's what this bylaw has done. I guess it's not been.
To just this one sport.
To just this one sport.
That's what, that's where it's deeply unfair.
And, and that's where our full-time counsel has had the same perception problem that our former outside counsel had is he really wasn't sure how to, how to sell it. If he ever got three or a champion. Who, is there any opposition? I mean, somebody come up with other?
Anybody disagree?
And I was talking to Russell, like it's the, the John Lucas camp that he has in Texas. Well, like if you're a sophomore or above, technically like you can't attain. Uh, and that's a huge camp that they do for boys and girls.
Yeah. You couldn't have seen until this year. It depended on the timing of it. Cause they did do an early session. But you're right, box them out.
Is there any, is there any opposition to it? That anyone could come to, could think of an opposition or, or even have a school in your districts that would have that opposition?
I, I didn't, I think the opposition was, our coaches were afraid they were going to lose control of their kids. So that's in football coaches that want to force kids to, so they can't do anything. So you, you got to play football.
When it was, when it was proposed to.
Possibly soccer as well.
But when it was proposed to eliminate it before, the objection came from football coaches fearful that halfway through the year, they're not doing very well and their kids are just going to go to weekend events. It didn't happen. But that was a fear.
Well, coaches of other high schools worked some of these events.
I don't think there's restrictions. They've got bylaw 16 restrictions on being involved.
You know, it's.
Can't use it as a recruiting opportunity.
It's interesting, your question.
We have some kids that go to Alabama, not our kid, but a kid in the state went to Alabama to attend the high school coach, a coach there, Alabama, Georgia, just where he was at. So I wonder how that aspect might work. We have Russell's high school coach working there and working in the camp, coming in contact with a lot of high profile people.
Well, thankfully, unless it's bylaw 16 problem, they don't have six there until you play varsity, right? So you, you would have, if you were older, you might check, it might, it's going to stand out.
But no, I can't think of anything else other than that. That's reaching, but.
You know, it's interesting that, that, you know, that question was asked and, and it seems like there is no opposition or there, there's a struggle to come up with opposition. That's exactly whether it's antipathy or something else. That's exactly the reaction that we often got at the regional meeting. And, and it's just interesting.
I still, I still believe there's a number who don't like it down inside and they kind of like the fact it's a state rule. They can transfer the blame, but I don't know how big that number is. Hold on.
Any more discussion? Move that, hold on, just forward to the end.
Thank you all for your patience.
Your motion that I've done.
This is a, September is always for the new members. It's September is always a heavy report meeting. Cause we haven't had any events yet.
Second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. No, 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 wait a minute. In the minutes, bugger.
Work sessions adjourned.